Good evening. Welcome to the September 11th, 2023, meeting of the Stillwater City Council. At this time, I will call this meeting to order. And I'm going to ask you all to stand, but before we say the Pledge of Allegiance, I would ask that we just observe a moment of silence in memory of the lives lost in the tragic terrorist attacks on our country 22 years ago, and also in honor of brave firefighters, police officers, and other first responders who acted with such bravery that day and have acted with such bravery every day since to protect our communities. Please stand. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up on our agenda tonight, we have some proclamations and presentations, and our first proclamation will be in recognition of Constitution Week. We have a representative, I think Jenny Sneed is here from the Daughters of the American Revolution, and I will go ahead and read this proclamation, and then if you all would like to say a few words, we'll do that. Whereas September 17, 2023, marks the 236th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations that will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States, designating September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, William Joyce, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of City of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained.
We appreciate the City of Stillwater recognizing Constitution Week with this proclamation, and it is important that we protect the liberties that we have that were given to us through that Constitution. So thank you very much. And on behalf of the Cimarron Chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution, I would like to present you with this challenge coin.
Ma'am, if you want to join us over here, we'll take a quick picture. All right, next up, we have a proclamation in recognition of Suicide Prevention and Recovery Month, and we do have representatives from Grand Mental Health here. I think Amy Garrison is here with us. And I'll do the same thing. I'll read this proclamation, and then if you'd like to come up and say a few words, we'd appreciate it. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas 4.1% of adults in Oklahoma had serious thoughts of suicide in the past year, with 1 in 10 students reporting attempted suicide in the past 12 months, and whereas nearly 300,000 Oklahomans report having a substance use disorder, and whereas substance use disorder is not a moral issue but rather a chronic, treatable disease that individuals can recover from and go on to live healthy lives, and whereas the Oklahoma Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services believes all Oklahomans deserve to have mental health and addiction services without fear of judgment through evidence-based crisis response continuum, and whereas less than 1% of the 872 Oklahomans that died by suicide in 2022 were seen at a certified community behavioral health clinic, proving that connecting to evidence-based treatment services work, and whereas ODMH SAS has provided more than 80,000 naloxone kits to prevent overdoses resulting from opioid use, including fentanyl, since January of 2023, whereas the 988 mental health lifeline supports Oklahomans experiencing a mental health crisis, struggling with substance use, or having thoughts of suicide through trained mental health professionals via text or call, mobile crisis teams, urgent care, and crisis centers, and follow-up appointments. Now therefore, I, William Joyce, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim September 2023 as Suicide Prevention and Recovery Month in Stillwater to increase public understanding of the importance of mental health and illness.
Thank you. On behalf of Grand Mental Health and Oklahoma Department of Mental Health and Substance Use, we would like to say thank you for recognizing this important month.
Well, we thank you for the services that you all provide. I know the 988 mental health line has been a huge help, and I've seen a lot of information out there about it, so we're happy to help provide additional awareness of your services.
Thank you. Grand will also be hosting a suicide awareness community fair on Thursday at our Cimarron Clinic that I have some flyers that I can leave with anybody that's here that would also like to attend and learn more.
All right, well, I plan to be there for that as well. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, next up on the agenda, Heather Mitchell is here from Stillwater Public Schools to introduce the Stillwater Pioneer Pathfinders.
Hello. Hello, everybody. We are the Pioneer Pathfinder Academy that is located at the high school, and before we start, let's go ahead and introduce ourselves so you know who we are. I'm Kelsey Tate, and I've been with the Pathfinder Academy for three years now.
I'm Heather Mitchell, and this is my first year as a Pathfinder teacher.
What's your name?
Andy.
Blake.
Three of our interns here, and we have a couple of our products and a little bit of informational sheets we like to hand out, if that's okay? Perfect. Okay, why don't you guys start right over here, and we'll go around the room starting right up here, okay? Let me go hand out the goodies, please, and the sheets. Thank you. Okay, while they're handing it out, Ms. Mitchell and I will talk a little bit about our program. So, we are housed at the high school. We are not traditional school, though, by many means at all. We are a transitional academy. We are young adults with disabilities, aging from about 18 to 22 roughly. We have graduated, all of our academic credits are done, they have been met, we have a diploma, and they come back to work with us for a couple of years, depending on each student, some one year, some a couple of years. What we really focus on in our academy is, we have four kind of cornerstones that we really stick to. We abide by all the students' IEPs, but then we also work on specifically community participation, plugging our interns in at different places in the community for them to be purpose-driven and involved members of our community after our program, after they're out of the school and out of the academy. Also, independent living, that looks different for every student, so it can be as little as us helping them make their food, their sandwich, and some students learning how to use an oven and a stove and things like that. So independent living, community involvement, trade skills so that hopefully we can find employment and volunteer opportunities for us to continue after our program within the community, as well as social and emotional awareness. So being our best self-advocate, knowing ourselves as best as we can to be successful within our community, and our community sometimes looks like wherever we're at, at our home, in our group home, in our community, whatever that looks like. And some of the, Ms. Mitchell will talk a little bit more about our program.
So a typical day in our workroom is actually not typical at all. Each student, as Ms. Tate said, has a designed IEP and things like that, so we have to accommodate to what they, how we think is what success looks like for them. So things like in our workroom, such as just doing laundry, learning how to sweep and mop a floor, or doing dishes, all the way to kitchen awareness and kitchen safety, that's one of our biggest ones right now because we cook lunch in our workroom every single day. So in order to do that, we host things like Pioneer Pop, which we have greatly appreciated being able to come here to the City Hall to offer service to everybody, but we also do things like, I just, what else do we do?
Grocery shopping.
Oh, we go grocery shopping, and then we also have jobs throughout the community. We have some that work at Freddy's, we have some that are going to start internships at Turning Point or Carmen's Corner, and just whatever is success for them in their life and how we can better make them communities of Stillwater. Yes?
One thing we forgot to say, which is my favorite, is sometimes we make food for holidays.
Yes, we do that, yes.
Are there any questions for our interns?
I would like to just say that Fridays when you are here are the best. So when TJ sends out the email that you're down in the police lobby, the employees just come like crazy for the pop and the treats, and it's a joy to have them here, so appreciate the program you all do.
Thank you. We appreciate your business.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
This is a fantastic program. We're so glad that you all came to help share, spread the word about the Pioneer Pathfinders. Thanks. All right, at this time, I'm going to ask Dawn Dotson to come up and introduce us to the citywide communications team.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Approximately two years ago, we developed a citywide communications team who represent core areas, what we consider communications infrastructure areas, that include safety, health, education, law, economic development, politics, citizenship, and quality of life. Those members include Rob Hill, Stillwater Emergency Management Director, Brendan Pope, Stillwater Emergency Management Deputy Director, Lieutenant Terry Lowe, SPD's PIO, Destin Portman, SFD, the Fire Department's PIO, Scott Haywood, Payne County Health Department, PIO, Shyla Eggers, Stillwater Medical Center Director of Public Relations, Kristy Morrison, Visit Stillwater President and CEO, Reagan Mitchell, Chambers Economic Development Director, Grace Welch, Chambers Communications Director, Shannon Rigsby, OSU Office of Brand Management, Public Information Officer, Barry Fuchsus, Stillwater Public Schools Communications Coordinator, Emily James, Meridian Technology Center's new Executive Director of Communications and Marketing, we're very fortunate to have her, Taylor Hutton, who couldn't be here with us tonight, Meridian Technology Center's Communications and Marketing Specialist, Kylie Moulton, Oklahoma Department of Career and Technology Education Communications and Marketing Coordinator, Courtney Callison, Payne County Election Board Secretary, and myself. We meet almost every week via Zoom for approximately 45 minutes, and once a month for lunch. We utilize this time to collaborate on communication efforts and to inform everyone about big projects and current events within our organization. When we started this group, it was to navigate through the pandemic. As we reached the "health crisis endemic," that's a word that Scott Haywood taught us, we collectively agreed to continue our team meetings for many reasons. We understand it is not if an emergency or crisis happens, but when. Together, we are prepared to help our fellow organizations as needed to get through the good times and the bad. We also realize our efforts in continuous communications have helped create a more informed community. At the end of the day, we are not here for ourselves, we are here collectively to continue momentum for a stronger, healthier, more educated, safer, and vibrant Stillwater. After all, to quote Kristy, "We are America's friendliest college town." So they are here tonight, and we are just here to say hi, we exist, and we are here to help you and our entire community. So they are here, if they would stand up, that would be great, so you could see them.
You know, I've never heard Kristy say that before.
Thank you very much. If you have any questions for any of them or any of us?
Well, I will say just quickly that I've had the opportunity to present and talk with this group before about our, gosh, now I just totally went blank, but I, we talked about doing something.
It was, uh...
The Juneteenth?
It was multiple events.
It was where orange, that's what it was.
Who said that?
Thank you, Kristy. As soon as I said that, I totally blanked on one. But I appreciate the work that you all do, providing information to our community in so many different ways for your organizations, and this is just a great opportunity for you all to get together and make sure that we're providing a consistent set of information. Shyla has her hand up.
On behalf of the rest of us, I want to thank Dawn because she has been our rock and she kept us together, kept this meeting, and we appreciate all she does.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Well, teamwork makes the dream work, so thank you, guys.
Thank you all. Appreciate you being here. Okay, that concludes the proclamation portion of the meeting. Now we get to move on to the not-as-fun things. We have a fairly lengthy consent docket tonight, councilors. Questions, comments, or action on the consent docket?
I move to approve the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent. Please vote. Vote a five to zero, the consent docket is approved. That takes us down to general orders. Item seven, 7A is Presentation and Discussion of the New Stillwater Comprehensive Plan Process: Possible Action to Approve a Contract with Professional Services with Fries and Nichols. And Jaclyn Porter is here for that item. Right? We just got there faster than you expected?
All right. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Jaclyn Porter, city planner, bringing forth to you an exciting opportunity to enter into a professional service agreement with Fries and Nichols to provide the services of preparing a comprehensive plan for the City of Stillwater and an audit of our land development code. City of Stillwater adopted the 2030 Comprehensive Plan, also known as our C3 Plan, on April 1st of 2013. Comprehensive plans help project the desire of the community in various areas ranging from transportation to future land use maps. The City of Stillwater has come a long ways in 10 years. The desire and the needs of the community have changed, so earlier this year, city staff solicited an RFQ for strategic urban plan services. A selection of a committee of seven members made up of three city staff and three community representatives. The members of the community that were on the selection committee was Jenna Phillips, Jeremy Bell, and Stephen Goze. We appreciate their dedicated time and commitment to the community by being part of the selection process. We had six firms submit for the RFQ. Four of the six firms were selected for interviews. Out of the four, Fries and Nichols demonstrated an outstanding grasp at the unique challenges faced by college towns, the ability to support and teach Stillwater staff, and showed a clear understanding of the revenue issues that the cities in Oklahoma face with being primarily sales tax. This professional service agreement with Fries and Nichols is a timeline of about 18 months to provide a comprehensive plan and audit of the land development code for a amount not to exceed 300,000. Tonight, this item is being brought to you to allow authorization by the interim city manager to execute the associated contract documents, as the funds of this contract have already been allocated. At this time, I will ask Dawn Warwick with Fries and Nichols to present an overview of the strategic plan process that will incorporate extensive citizen input. After the presentation, Dawn and along with staff will be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Hello. Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity, Mayor, councilmembers. My name's Dawn Warwick. It's a pleasure to be here this evening to speak to you all. I have a short presentation. We're happy to field questions and have a conversation if that's what you would like to do, but I will breeze through a few slides first as a bit of an overview of the project. So just a little bit about me, I'm the project manager for this project. I've been an urban planner my entire career, close to 30 years. The majority of my career has been in municipal planning, so I work for a consulting firm now, but I've been with the firm for about four and a half years. Prior to that, I worked for the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas for almost 10 years. I worked for the city or metro government in Louisville, Kentucky for seven years, and then I finished my municipal career as the Planning Director in the City of Tulsa, where I was for seven years. So I have a good understanding of what it means to sit in Jackie's seat and to work projects and long-range planning activities, as well as rezonings and other types of applications through a review process, working with applicants, working with citizens, working with elected and appointed officials. I also do a lot of work with codes, so writing and updating zoning and subdivision regulations, kind of all in the wheelhouse for myself and for the team. The Fries and Nichols team is really proud to have a long tenure of award-winning work. This is important to us because it's important to our clients, that the work that they receive is valuable to them, that it's nationally recognized or regionally recognized, and so we've got, like I said, at least 14 years of continuous recognition, and that's not because we want recognition, it's because we do good work and we want our clients to get recognition so that the work that they do can launch them for other things. So that's just to say that the people that will be working on this project for you are skilled, they are experts in their field. This is just a glimpse of our org chart, and so as it shows, I'm established as the project manager. Chance Sparks, who's our group manager for urban planning and design within Fries and Nichols, is the quality control person for the project. Paul Green, who is actually here, he is our client representative. We established somebody who's got a good connection with the community, and Paul's probably the biggest cheerleader for Stillwater that I've ever seen, so he's a great person to help us understand the intricacies of what happens in Stillwater and what it means to be connected to the community. Wendy Benau is our principal in charge. She's the practice leader for urban planning and design. And then you see on the spin-out, we have experts in development codes. We actually have on our team subconsultants who have expertise in housing and economic development, because we know that those are two critical issues that the City of Stillwater is facing, that we need to make sure that we're really understanding of the current market trends and what's important for moving policy forward in those areas. We have transportation planning on the team, as well as hazard mitigation and resilience. We want to make sure that you have a comprehensive plan that represents a resilient community. One of the things that will kind of emphasize that is just the communications team that was just introduced. That represents resiliency, that gives you a lot of depth in the way that you communicate with your citizens and your constituents. I plan on tapping into that, because as you see, community engagement is another component of what we're going to be doing. Any comprehensive plan is the community's plan, so it's important that we get the community to the plan and plug them into the process, make sure that they are well aware of what's going on and have a voice in that process. We also have folks on the team who have specific expertise in downtown and small area and campus planning. We know we're not going to be planning the campus, but having that knowledge is at least a good frame of reference. So really what we're looking at, and Jackie did a nice job of sort of introducing this and giving you a little bit of history about the C3 Plan, the long-range plan for a community or the comprehensive plan, it's about the future. It's not about what we need immediately, it's about what we anticipate needing in the coming decades and what we want to see as, you know, the vision of the community in the future. It's important, as I mentioned, to collaborate with stakeholders across the community, and that's part of what's baked into our process. We also ensure that at the end of the day, you have a document that has been built upon consensus so that it has policy support for updating any plans, programs, regulations that will carry that information forward, that implement the comprehensive plan document. So we mentioned your C3 Plan, the community vision for 2040, what we, 2040 or 2045, the things that we want to focus on are your future land use, arts and culture, resiliency, economic development and redevelopment, transportation and mobility, so not just how vehicles get around the community, but how everybody utilizes different forms of mobility, infrastructure and public services, and then we always focus a lot on implementation because a plan is great, it's a beautiful document, you can set it on your coffee table, but if you don't use it, it's not necessarily serving its purpose. So that implementation chapter is all about action. So these are just some of the key groups of individuals that are a part of the planning process. Of course, you have those of us who are kind of on the consulting team and leading the process, city staff are direct contacts and direct support, also bringing local expertise and knowledge to local processes and local organizations. There'll be a citizen steering committee or citizen-led steering committee that we'll work with. We ask them to serve as ambassadors to the project, to really make sure that, you know, we have people who have their, you know, thumb on the pulse of the community that can help to kind of be a conduit for us, take information from us into the community and vice versa back into the project. So there'll also be activities and touchpoints for both the Planning Commission and City Council throughout this 18 months that will be working with you. And of course, the group that's not mentioned on the previous slide but is the most important group is your community. We think it's incredibly important to have public engagement that's meaningful, public engagement that's not just sitting and listening to lectures or listening to somebody download information, it needs to be interactive, we need to give people a chance to meet us where they are with regard to engaging in the project. So a lot of that means that we don't necessarily have the standard open house type meetings or town hall type meetings, they may be one or two of those, but we also want to piggyback on community events and go out into the community so that we're available to people and they have an opportunity to plug into the project without making an extra effort to come to City Hall for a meeting, for instance. We also will always stand up a project website that's available 24/7. When we do community surveys, we'll launch them from the website and maintain information there so that if anybody has just a desire to plug in and figure out where they are, where we are in the process, the website's a good place to start. Of course, the effort here is all about building consensus, so at the end of the day, we have a series of action steps and policies that the community agrees with and that can help give you and your staff the, I guess, the political support, the community support to move forward with new action items that implement the plan. We mentioned, or Jackie mentioned, that we do have some expertise in working in town gown type situations, so the majority of the images on the screen are actually communities that I've worked in. We're working in Edmund right now. The second one to the left is San Marcos, and so Chance Sparks lives and works in San Marcos, that's a community that he's very familiar with, where Texas, Southern Texas University is located, Fayetteville, Arkansas, Louisville, Kentucky, and Tulsa, all college towns of different sizes and shapes and makeups, but what's important is that each one is unique. We know that some of the issues and some of the concerns that happen in college towns are pretty common throughout, so we'll be able to apply our knowledge in that regard. We also know that in college communities, neighborhoods are very precious and important to really recognize where those neighborhoods have the opportunity to flex and to grow and to change over time, and where we need to really lock in a neighborhood where it sits because it's stable and it needs to be protected in that regard. So we'll pay special attention to neighborhoods, what types of housing works, what doesn't, and where we need to consider growth and stability. So all of this is to say, how do you realize the plan? Once the plan is adopted, you have tools such as your strategic plan, your regulations, other programs that can be utilized to carry the plan's vision forward through various action steps, so we'll want to make sure that that is addressed in the implementation element of the comprehensive plan. We don't like to necessarily write a whole lot of narrative in our implementation section because it is really a checklist. It's this task needs to be done in this timeframe, it should cost about this amount, and these are the responsible parties. So it's important that it's pretty straightforward and allows you all to really take action immediately, once you have that, once you have that plan and implementation guide. So some of the things that we've been doing, some of the communities that... So the majority of the images on the screen are actually communities that I've worked in. We're working in Edmund right now. The second one to the left is San Marcos. And so Chance Sparks lives and works in San Marcos, that's a community that he's very familiar with, where Texas, Southern Texas University is located. Fayetteville, Arkansas, Louisville, Kentucky, and Tulsa, all college towns of different sizes and shapes and makeups. But what's important is that each one is unique. We know that some of the issues and some of the concerns that happen in college towns are pretty common throughout. So we'll be able to apply our knowledge in that regard. We also know that in college communities, neighborhoods are very precious and important to really recognize where those neighborhoods have the opportunity to flex and to grow and to change over time, and where we need to really lock in a neighborhood where it sits because it's stable and it needs to be protected in that regard. So we'll pay special attention to neighborhoods, what types of housing works, what doesn't, and where we need to consider growth and stability. So all of this is to say, how do you realize the plan? Once the plan is adopted, you have tools such as your strategic plan, your regulations, other programs that can be utilized to carry the plan's vision forward through various action steps. So we'll want to make sure that that is addressed in the implementation element of the comprehensive plan. We don't like to necessarily write a whole lot of narrative in our implementation section because it is really a checklist. It's this task needs to be done in this timeframe, it should cost about this amount, and these are the responsible parties. So it's important that it's pretty straightforward and allows you all to really take action immediately, once you have that, once you have that plan and implementation guide. So some of the things that we've been doing, some of the communities that this type of project has been deployed in, Choctaw's an example. We, several years ago, did a comprehensive plan with the city of Choctaw, and then more recently, we've gone back and done some policy work with them on growth management and some of their code amendments, to make sure that they were implementing their plan as it was intended. The image on the right is the subdivision process in the new Oklahoma County subdivision regulations. So several of these communities, El Reno, Edmund, and Shawnee, are communities where we've done work with their codes. In fact, Shawnee and Edmund are active code projects for us right now. Both of them have adopted comprehensive plans within the past three to five years. So to get this done, we've got an 18-month timeline, really beginning now. The first phase is developing background, reaching out, doing first rounds of initial public input. The background is what we generally refer to as a community snapshot, just demographics, understanding what's existing on the ground today, so that we have a baseline for moving forward. Once we gather input and start understanding what people's main goals and objectives are, we move into the plan development phase, and we'll look at each one of those chapters that I mentioned, such as arts and culture and transportation. And we will develop goals and a series of recommendations for each of those. That's what happens as we roll into Phase Three. And then on Phase Four, part of the implementation, kind of carryover, is to start, kind of kick-starting the implementation of the comprehensive plan by doing a deep dive into your existing regulations, understanding what needs to be updated in order to reflect the type of development that's exemplified in your comp plan. So all of that will take us through to spring of 2025. But to get started, the first steps are to really start framing up the engagement calendar and how we're going to start deploying engagement efforts, excuse me, and then doing enough background research that we all have a good foundation in what we need to know moving forward. So that's all I have for you, but I'm more than happy to answer questions if you have them.
Thank you, Dawn. That was a very thorough look at the process, that's very helpful. None of us were on council the last time we did one of these, and so it's good to see.
It's kind of a generational thing.
Absolutely. Counselors, any questions?
I do. I didn't see a lot of reference in there to the entity that provides us 20,000 citizens and still are, namely OSU.
To OSU?
Yeah.
They're a huge stakeholder.
Yeah, how are they going to be involved in this?
I anticipate that they'll have representation on the stakeholder committee, but we will also reach out to them separately, because there will be conversations that we want to have, so that we understand the dynamic and the plans that they have and how that might impact the community as a larger community.
You know, a couple of things I think of is how the McKnight Center has affected the city and how our bus service is provided by Oklahoma State. So those are a couple of things that I think we need to be aware of.
Absolutely. Thank you.
So how much does the previous comprehensive plan play into this? Are we starting from scratch? Are we building on what we had?
We're always using the existing as a touchpoint. I think that once we receive that first round of public input, we'll know how much is similar to what was done previously. I think that there were a lot of operational components of the existing plan, and I think that's great. We want to make sure that we don't lose any ground. We always go back and look at all of the adopted policy documents. So whether it's the comprehensive plan or other operational plans, master plans, so that we can carry forward the recommendations from those plans that are still relevant and desirable within the community.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just so excited for this process. I'm a planner myself, and so just the opportunity to have a new, fresh look at our comprehensive plan that's more functional for our community, more functional for the folks that are interested in investing in our community with us, I think will be just fantastic. So we're very much looking forward to working with you through this process.
Super. We are too.
I've kind of a, maybe this is off-base, maybe this isn't something in your wheelhouse, but I know that politically at the state level, there's been some challenges to the use of comprehensive plans in communities in this state. I assume you guys are on top of...
We are definitely watching out for that. So I serve as the chapter president for the American Planning Association chapter in the state. We have a legislative committee, we're plugged in, we're communicating with OML, just trying to figure out right now what's going to be coming forward for the next session. And so yes, we're watching that closely.
Thank you. All right. Jaclyn, anything further from staff? Or I guess there's a staff recommendation for this? Go ahead.
Okay. Staff recommends the motion to enter into a professional service agreement with Fries and Nichols for the service of preparing a comprehensive plan and a code diagnostic for a cost not to exceed $300,000, and authorize the interim city manager to execute the associated contract documents.
Thank you, Jaclyn. Counselors, further discussion, or is there action on the recommendation?
Motion to approve staff's recommendation.
Second.
You have a motion and a second? Please vote. Well, that's approved with a vote of five to zero. Looking forward to that process. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
Item 7B, presentation, discussion, possible action to adopt the 2023 to 2027 strategic plan, and Dawn Dotson is going to help us with that.
We are presenting the City of Stillwater Strategic Plan 2023 through 2027. It was developed from multiple discussions and collaborations interdepartmentally in coordination with consultant Oakley Ryan of Witten House, along with input from the Community KPI Committee, direction from City Council, and budget priorities. According to the employee survey in 2022, only about half of our employees understood their role and where it fit in within the city's overall direction. Many struggled to connect the dots between their individual efforts and the city's strategic plan. Therefore, we adapted the development of our strategic plan this year to be a more intentional collaboration with staff and departments. We worked closely with each department to identify their mission, their personal mission for their department, and develop their goals and priorities in alignment with the city's strategic priorities. This new format for the strategic plan better connects our employees to the overall vision and goals for our organization, and it helps them to see how important their role is to the success of the organization and the positive impact to our community. Communications Department is going to print posters of each department's mission and strategic priorities and hang them in the employee work areas in an effort to reinforce how impactful their work is to our organization and community. Our 2023-2027 strategic plan is available online at stillwaterok.gov/strategicplan. Please note, the city's vision, mission, and priorities did not change from last year. We are grateful for all of the time and attention our department directors and their staff put into creating this document. This was an organization-wide approach to building a strategic plan, and we are excited to present it to you this evening. I'm going to take a few minutes just to provide a quick preview of the online strategic As you can see, it has the Stillwater profile and stats, our priorities that each department I think as you can see, if you haven't had a chance to preview it yet, just looking at this quick glance, you can see how it is very department-intentional-driven to really go in with each of those departments' missions and to be more individualized. Also in front of you is the NOW document for fiscal year 2024. This is an overview of big projects and initiatives we are focused on in relation to safety and infrastructure and economy and quality of life. We developed this accompanying piece last year and have made the necessary updates to make it applicable for this year. So if you go to stillwaterok.gov/strategicplan, you will see our strategic plan there, and then also the NOW projects and initiatives which you do have before you. I'm here to listen to any feedback or answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Dawn. Counselors, any questions?
I would just make a comment that I applaud the efforts to connect the departments to the strategic plan. Having participated in multiple strategic plans through my professional life and knowing how hard it is sometimes for a department to connect how they meet those goals, how they contribute to that, is really important. And so I applaud that you all have done that, so that each department can say, hey, here are the things we do that contributes to the city's success. And so I think that is a great way to kind of start with those six areas that we consider to be the highest priorities, but then push that down to each level and each department so that they can relate to all that. And, you know, I think we all know that when we show up to a job and we know how we're contributing, that it makes all the difference in the world.
Absolutely.
I completely agree with what she just said.
I think the document is great, too, from a design standpoint. It's very, you know, a lot of great pictures and just a good document for communicating all the actual detail, but also just communicating a sense of purpose and a sense of strategy for the community. So that's a great job on the document itself.
It was definitely teamwork, including Rob taking the drone out and getting that 700-foot photo that is your cover for us. We appreciate him. Oh, yeah.
And I think the "did you know" and "by the numbers" type things are great, because not everybody, you know, a lot of people probably don't know the makeup of all of our city departments.
That's right.
So I think it was, there were things that I didn't know that I learned in reading through it, so.
It's good feedback.
Dawn, could you just talk a little bit, so it's the strategic plan for 2023 to 2027. Can you talk a little bit about what, so you've got, I really like this NOW piece, I think that's really cool, but can you talk a little bit, as there's goals listed out for the departments, like how that would be updated as they, because some of them, like, you know, hope they might be done before 2027?
Absolutely. So what we do is we try to keep this to where we bring this to you around the budget time, and we're a little later due to just continuing those discussions, and we really wanted the departments to be able to own this, for this to be theirs, to have that investment. So we're going to start back with those meetings, since we revamped it, what it looked like this year, we're going to start back with those meetings in the winter, and then that way we'll be back on timeline to bring this to you again for around budget time, with the updated version.
So the idea is that it's capturing these, kind of projecting out these four years, but you'll be updating it annually?
Absolutely. Yep, very much a fluid document. Yes, ma'am.
Adding a year to the end every year.
Yes, yes, absolutely. It was really nice when city manager Moore and I were working on this earlier, the NOW, to be able to remove some of these things that we had already done collectively this year. That was, that was pretty exciting, so.
And I think some of those things can be, can go from goals to accomplishments.
That's a good point.
That actually might be a good last page, all the stuff you crossed off the list.
That's actually a great idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could add another piece, accomplishments, yep.
Sometimes, I don't know, I'll speak for the, I'm not sure if I speak for the rest of you, but sometimes sitting up here, it feels like we don't actually check much off the list. It feels like everything just keeps going, so I'd love to see that list.
Okay. We will definitely add that. That's a good idea.
Yeah, just, yeah. Thank you so much, Dawn. Great work.
We have a recommendation.
Go ahead.
Okay. Staff recommends adoption of the City of Stillwater Strategic Plan for 2023 through 2027.
Motion to accept staff recommendation?
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt this strategic plan. Please vote. It's approved with a vote of five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to reports from the officers and the boards. Anything for us tonight? Ms. Carnley?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Moore?
Yes, Mayor. If you're interested in all things utility rates, background information in how utility rates are determined, please save the following dates. So our next meeting in here on September 25th, City Council meeting, we'll hear findings about electric and stormwater rate studies. And on October 2nd, we'll hear information on the water and wastewater rate studies. If you're unable to attend or watch, you can watch live on the City of Stillwater YouTube. Reruns will be available on our municipal channel, which is AT&amp;T U-verse 99 and Sudden Link 14. We'll have town halls in the month of October with rate study information, so we'd love to have citizen input and involvement in those town halls. We'll be putting out a lot of information on social media about those town halls coming soon.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. You said, you made a comment about seeing these meetings on our YouTube page. They are there, but I noticed in the new website, there's not a link next to the old meeting agendas. Anybody else miss that? It used to be you'd go through the old list of agendas, and there was like, here's the old agenda, and here's the YouTube link. I don't know if that's something we can add.
Yeah, and maybe once we activate the live meeting module, that that will show up, but we can see if we can get that link added right now.
They're there, because I just went to YouTube and I found the meeting I was looking for, but they're not linked directly on the website, so. But important rate study meetings coming up over the next month or so, so be here for that. Vice Mayor Jaloski?
Yes. The city is accepting applications for citizen representatives to serve on the Board of Drainage Appeals. This position needs to be filled by someone with knowledge of hydrology, engineering, stormwater management, or a related field, and who have no economic interest in the development or construction industries. If you would like to get involved in your local government and help make Stillwater even greater, please consider applying online at stillwaterok.gov/citizenboards. I think we've been asking for this role for a while, somebody...
That was a little tough. That one's got some requirements to it, so hopefully we'll find someone out there who can fill that role. Counselor Hawkins?
The annual Friends Fall Book Sale at the Stillwater Public Library will be September 14th through the 17th. Funds raised from the book sales pay for summer reading programs, community reading initiatives, new library materials, and much more. The library is located at 1107 South Duck Street. For more information about the book sale, go to stillwaterok.gov/library. And if you have books that you want to donate, that you have read and enjoyed, you can pass those along as well. Aorgo and Purchase Books from the library, they have a great selection. I think we take books and donate them and end up buying more than we take, so great opportunity, though.
I'm not allowed to bring home any more books, but maybe if I get rid of some, I'll take some down there. Counselor Clark?
I'm guessing no one in town will be surprised to hear there are multiple street and bridge construction projects throughout Stillwater. We ask that motorists pay careful attention when driving in construction areas, allow additional travel time, and take alternate routes if possible. For more information and updates about these projects, go to stillwaterok.gov/roads. I'm still getting used to the new URL.
Thanks, sir. Counselor Harden?
Yes, September is Fire Appreciation Month. We greatly appreciate our firefighters and staff with the Stillwater Fire Department for their continued efforts to keep our community safe. Thank you, Chief. The sacrifices they make, as well as their families, is from their sincere commitment to serve. They're typically first on the scene for emergency calls, in addition to fire-related calls, and are always ready to assist other cities when possible. You can follow them on Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. To receive updates or information, visit the website at the new place, stillwaterok.gov/fire. Again, thanks, Chief.
All right, I am going to, I probably don't have to remind anybody in town of this either, but it's OSU football season. Please consider taking advantage of the free park-and-ride shuttle service. The City of Stillwater and Oklahoma State University Athletics offer a free parking and shuttle service from downtown Stillwater. The shuttle runs every 30 minutes before and after the game. It begins three hours before the game and runs through the post-game. We have more than 500 free parking spots available downtown. Pickup and drop-off location is 7th Avenue and Lewis Street. You can go shopping, get something to eat, spend some time downtown before the game and after, if you, if you like, so. Save some money, beat the rush, park downtown, and go Pokes. All right, there is nothing else on this agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the City Council. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, Stillwater City Council is now adjourned. With a vote of five to zero, Stillwater City Council is now adjourned. At this time...I lost all my places because I was looking at the website. Hold on a second. I'm going to call seated order. Stillwater Economic Development Authority meeting for September 11th. If I can find the agenda, I will pull it up in just a second. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Counselors, we have three items on the consent, excuse me, trustees, we have three items on the consent docket. Is there question, comment, or action on the consent docket?
Motion to approve the consent docket?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. Under general orders, item A, Visit Stillwater Annual Report. And the new Visit Stillwater Board President, Blair Atkinson, is here to present.
Thank you so much for having me. As Mayor Joyce said, I am the new Chair of Visit Stillwater Board of Directors. I'm not sure how I earned that honor of distinction, but I am really glad to be affiliated with the organization and very pleased to be giving you all a report on our annual outcome. So I heard Mayor Joyce say, we rarely check things off the list. So I'll tell you some of the things we were able to check off the list last year at Visit Stillwater. So forgive me for reading some of this. I am the rookie in the room. So Kristi and Nicole are here. When we get to the end, if you have questions, I'm going to call in the heavy. So I take a lot of pride in being a part of this organization as the economic development organization. This year, we were really pleased to provide marketing services for over 250 local businesses and over 2,000 events a year. And really, our focus is on increasing that sales tax revenue, and I'll give you a great report on the outcome of that for this year as well. So starting with marketing and communications, over 85,000 copies of our 2023 Guide to the Local Scene were distributed, and over 100,000 copies will be distributed by the end of this calendar year. So we're really pleased with that outcome. Website traffic was up this year. Our most impressive sites were the Microsites for Crazy Days, Holidays, Caff Fry. Also, the site that we have for OSU Football Game Day is very popular, as you might expect. We are also very proud to feature a lot of Stillwater retailers in our monthly promo videos. I hope that you all have had the chance to see those as well. Also very popular, our Stillwater OSU Campus and Payne County Maps, our monthly e-newsletter, and our Still in the Know postcards this year have been very popular as well. The other thing that we do is the Five Rack Cards. So you all probably have seen those around OSU Athletics, the Park and Ride Program, the Fly SWO, Holidays 2022 in the Savings Pass, and then the Stillwater Geo Tour. So those cards, as you know, are kind of around town, and the rack cards have been popular for our visitors. Visitor Information Stands in the Stillwater Regional Airport is something that we're proud of. We just renewed the partnership with them and are, again, really proud to offer the free coffee bar for outbound passengers, making our airport continued destination for passengers. Over 2,000 events, as I said, 85 events, went to the Oklahoma Tourism and Recreation Department for their online calendar as well. Sales and service, we've got a great team that really is focused on meeting with event planners and local hospitality and tourism industry. And this year, we provided over $40,000 in grants that equated to about $1.3 million in visitor spending. So we think that is pretty exciting. And then we also track the assistance provided for about 800 events that equated to about $1.8 million in service provided as well. So the thing that struck me as part of this, as you all think about the contract you have with Visit Stillwater, our contract was for $975,000 in services, and we tracked the business and partnerships just under $2 million. So that's a really great return on investment. The other thing I'll update you about is the Stillwater Savings Pass. We, this year, featured about 51 businesses and had about 1,000 individuals download the pass with 247 redemptions, and created Oklahoma's first Geocache Tour, which had people from 12 different states complete it for a total of 16,000 in estimated local spending just from that innovative endeavor that we went through this year. So the biggest thing that I'm now faced with filling the big shoes of my predecessor, as you all know, in July, we helped with the visitor tax increase from 4% to 7%. And for half the year last year, that equated to about half a million dollars, which we think is a really great benefit for the Stillwater community and visitor development amenities like ball fields, for example. In the packet that you all had, I think that that number is now over a million dollars, closer to $1.2 million. So again, a great effort to really partner and make our city a destination. So with that, I'll conclude and ask if you all have questions or anything that you'd like me to direct to the people in the back of the room to answer.
No help up here. You're all alone.
In the hot seat. That's what this is. All right.
Trustees, any questions?
I will say one of the things that I love about the Visit Stillwater website and/or letters that go out, emails that go out, is the calendar. And that's such a little part of, I mean, of all the accomplishments. That seems like a little thing, but for people who are new in Stillwater, I, when they ask, when I'm asked about activities, I always refer them to that calendar. I think it's the most comprehensive calendar you can find that has OSU events, it has city events, it has cultural, educational, sports, you know, whatever's going on, it's really out there. And so that's a ton of information to keep up to date, I know. So compliments to the Visit Stillwater gang for doing that because I do think it's a great resource, and especially for people who are new in town that don't know exactly where to get plugged in.
Agreed. Thank you. Even for those locals, it is a great resource.
I go through it every time I get the email. Okay, what's going on that I don't know about?
Yeah, that's exactly right. Thank you for that feedback. Yeah. All right. Thank you.
I'll have to second that one, by the way, on my calendar. I can tell when my wife has gone to the calendar because all of a sudden I end up with like 30 things this month to look at and to do.
That's great. That's great.
She fills up my calendar all the time with that.
All about economic development.
And I've been here seven years, and so I don't know if I'm a newbie or an oldie, but anyway, it's great.
That's awesome. Thank you.
I generally like to ask Blair why you guys are here, and I know you're new to the job, so you may have to kick this one back. But where do you guys see the sort of biggest need as we go forward? We've talked a lot over the last couple of years about those additional amenities, things that, additional places to bring people in town. I just want to give you the opportunity, if there's other stuff that you see that we need to be doing from a visitor development standpoint, what else out there might we be focused on?
I'll ask Kristi. I'll say just from my perspective, a little because of my role outside of Visit Stillwater, I'm really excited about the ball fields, really excited about what's happening at the YMCA and some of those partnerships. Those will offer a lot of opportunities for us to get more visitors to town. There's a few other partnerships that may be emerging with university that I think are also very positive. But Kristi?
Yeah, the Conference Center. That's been a big focus with Kristi and her team, really trying to be very attuned to how that conference center is working and how we can help promote that and get more people here. Anything else?
Good. Thank you so much for being here.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it. Item six, any reports from the officers of the board? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the SEDA meeting. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater Economic Development Authority is now adjourned. At this time, I will call to order the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting for September 11, 2023. Questions, comments, or action on the consent docket?
Motion to approve the consent docket?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve consent. Please vote. Consent docket's approved with a vote of five to zero. Any reports from the officers of the board? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn SUA. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, Stillwater Utilities Authority is now adjourned, and that concludes our meetings for the evening.